We're going to call to order the October 9th, 2017 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to start off with an invocation by Commissioner Perush, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here this evening, we have left behind a glorious fall weekend full of football games, and cider mills, and pumpkin gatherings, and yard cleanup, and in my case, listening to my dad extolled the talents of the Cleveland Indians baseball team. But at the same time, hundreds of thousands of our fellow citizens are struggling to put their lives back together after devastating weather events, an unspeakable tragedy that consumed our attention over the last few weeks. This evening, hundreds of our fellow citizens in Texas and along the Gulf Coast are still displaced from their homes and businesses as they rebuild and repair in the wake of Hurricanes Harvey and Irma. In Puerto Rico, thousands more of our fellow citizens are opting to leave their homes permanently, leaving behind people and places that they had known their whole lives as the major infrastructure of the island is completely rebuilt, which will take years. And just this afternoon, we learned that wildfires in California are forcing thousands of evacuations and have already destroyed neighborhoods and are going through the city of Anaheim at a fast pace. And in Los Angeles, families are arranging and conducting funerals, or they are holding worried vigils in hospital rooms and intensive care units as they pray for their loved ones to heal. Here in Royal Oak, we're saddened at times and emotionally exhausted from watching and hearing the news recount tragedy after tragedy in such a short time. In light of the disasters in other parts of the country, we reiterate our gratitude for our first responders and community volunteers who we have no doubt would have leaped just as passionately and professionally into the middle of the disaster if something similar had occurred here as their counterparts in Texas, and California, and Nevada, and Puerto Rico in order to save lives, protect the vulnerable, comfort the victims, and restore order to the community. We join this evening in sending healing thoughts and prayers to our fellow citizens who are struggling to put their lives back together and to understand why tragedy ended up on their doorstep. And we join everyone in our community in sending a fervent wish for peace and comfort and goodwill to all of those across the country affected by these tragedies, both now and in the future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get to public comment, I'm just going to make a quick announcement regarding Normandy Oaks. Again, we encourage residents to drop by and share your ideas for the future Normandy Oaks on Saturday, October 28th, at the Royal Oak Board of Education offices at 800 Davillion. The public engagement event will take place from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with a one-hour lunch break from noon to 1:00 PM. The city of Royal Oak, with assistance from its consultants, Nowack and Frost and LEP Plus Creative, will host an open-house-style workshop that will allow people to drop in and become park designers for a day. Everyone is invited, including the children. There will be several creative stations set up, including a children's table for kids to draw and offer suggestions. An opinion survey will also be available that you can fill out during the workshop or fill out online at your convenience. Please plan to set aside 30 to 60 minutes of your Saturday to help us out and better understand what citizens of Royal Oak are thinking about this brand-new community park. This is a great opportunity. It's going to be an amazing park, and we hope as many people as possible can show up on Saturday and offer their feedback. So... Quick announcement on Normandy Oaks. This brings us to item number four, public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our citizens to make decisions, and now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. And I ask that your comments be directed to the city commission as a whole, not to individual commissioners. It's the only time tonight to address the city commission on agenda items as there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. If you wish to speak tonight, wait till you're recognized by me, the mayor, and then come to the podium. We're going to need you to state your name and your address for the record, and be mindful that the city commission wants to hear from as many people as possible, whoever wishes to speak, so we are limiting comments to five minutes or less, and we have a timer up there for you to keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, that's all right. Don't hesitate to call us, email us, Facebook us, whatever your preferred medium of communication is. We're always happy to listen and converse. Please note that the city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the agenda item is discussed or refer to the proper city department, often through Mr. Johnson, if it's not on the agenda to speak tonight. And our city manager, I can tell you, I peek over at his screen, and he is not on amazon.com or anything else. He is taking notes in his system here, and he does follow up on issues that are brought as appropriate. So with that, who's first? Mr. Wolf.
One Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. As I pointed out once before, before shovel hits the ground, a developer incurs expenses in planning. I read this in a Troy Monitor, including the hiring of architects, engineers, attorneys, et cetera. It is my opinion that the reason Mr. Boji has been given all this sweet, sweet deals is that he needs to make up for all the money he lost in the original project that was apparently cut back and turned down, the so-called public-private. I was told by the city manager at that time, at a meeting, there would be no longer a public-private deal. But this is apparently not exactly true if he is going to be given $5.5 million, whether it's an escrow or not, to be repaid to the, not to the general fund where it was taken from, but to the DDA, which I reiterate is not the same as returning it to where it was taken from. Okay? In my opinion, that means the approval, that is why only 11 businesses are litigating, and the DDA is remaining quiet. The following questions that I personally do not have answers to and may involve information that may be incorrect, and I seek to be corrected if any information that was given anonymously to me is false. If this information is, I just received, is that Plant Moran may have an ulterior motive, if this, to approve this project coheartedly without reservation, because it's the, beside the $400,000 already spent, if not more, with this, upon the completion of this project, Plant Moran is to receive $3.5 million? Is this true? Okay. The DDA is supposed to contribute to parking structure. How much is this? Ron Boji stated at a commission meeting, "All underground wiring for the building will be paid for by the city." And what about the plumbing and the pipes? What does he mean, "paid for by the city"? Who? How much? How much will the demolition of existing police station in City Hall cost? I understand there'll be surface parking lots to be constructed by Ron Boji somewhere. I am not sure, but what is the, if he's going to construct surface parking lots, will this be like an Imagine Theater thing where he's going to get the revenue? And another thing is, neither Ron Boji nor this commission has ever given a fact, the fact of where exactly this downtown Central Park is going to be and how big it is supposed to be. There's something really wrong here. Okay? Now, I spoke with an engineer not related to Royal Oak. He told me that this six-story office building, along with all the other projects like the 400, you know, the Frazard and all the others, will put a tremendous strain on our aging infrastructure, our sewers and drains, and will not, with a certainty, cause more incidents of sewer backups. And one of the candidates mentioned that even Pontiac has changed over to separate, to separate systems where we mingle our drain water with our sewage, and it ends up in Lake St. Clair. That is a rotten shame. By the way, I like to fish in Lake St. Clair. Okay? It is my lay opinion that special interests are unethically, if not illegally, being gifted tax dollars that could be going to so many other necessities and quality-of-life improvements. I'm talking millions of dollars, such as a downtown park. Star Dream was built on private donations and grants and corporations, and Campus Marsh is the same. Well, we could use these monies to refurbish Farmer's Market and equip it so it can also be a place for town hall meetings. It can go to expanding our library, you know, so we can have a place for a larger library with more activities. Monies instead of going to Plant Moran and Boji could be expanding all these activities. And exactly how much property, again, will be allocated? So, again, Arts Beach in East. The only drawing of the park was Arts Beach, was this amphitheater, and that's all I've ever seen. This amphitheater and lawn. Another example of taxpayers being condescended to subsidizing private special interests, in my opinion. Okay? So, Royal Oak is headed for another financial Katrina similar to, is it heading for a financial Katrina similar to what happened in Detroit, Pontiac, Highland Park, and countless other municipalities that spend money they do not have to leverage an even larger debt? I believe in development. I really do. I believe in vertical parking, but not development subsidized by hard-working taxpayers. Royal Oak life in play, play booey. Our city models should be money talks, anyone else can walk. Again, no respect for anyone. Anyone who comes here, you can't even grant them a few extra seconds. You have no respect for the citizens in this city.
Mr. Wolf, there's other people that wish to speak here tonight.
And that's why you'll be voted out.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Who's next? Yes, sir. It's like an auction, if you make a movement.
My name is David Alsop. I live at 1018 East 12 Mile Road in Royal Oak. I've lived here since 1965. We lived over on Maple in '63, '64. I have an interest in the community of longstanding. I graduated from Don Darrow. I just attended my reunion just this past Saturday, I guess last Saturday evening. I've worked all over the country. I've attended meetings like this all over the country. I could see that none of you are interested in what Mr. Wolf had to say. You just indulge him because it looks good on this agenda. You're not listening to him. You're not listening to anybody else in Royal Oak. You're doing exactly what you shouldn't do, and you shouldn't enter into these no-bid contracts, these sweetheart deals. If an attorney, if a judge, has to recuse themselves because there may be an appearance of impropriety, you should hold yourself to that same high standard that they're held to. But you haven't done that with this last clown that sat up here and judged people for years, O'Brien. Didn't you let him retire with a full retirement? He's guilty of official misconduct, carrying on an affair with his secretary. You paid her, and you've pensioned him off. He ought to have been charged with the offense of official misconduct. So you have an established pattern and practice of ignoring the citizens and avoiding your duty and responsibility as commissioners. I hope that all, the four commissioners that are, commission candidates that are running, replace four of you, and it's just too bad that all of you couldn't be replaced in this election round coming up. It would do the city of Royal Oak a lot of good. The people that I still know from childhood, all the way back to third, fourth grade, things like that, there's nobody that supports what you're doing out here. They're appalled. They're aghast that you'd be giving a developer $5.5 million to build on a property that's worth millions that you're giving them for a dollar. Your assessment that it's worth $900,000 is a fraud. It's a sham. It ought to be looked at real carefully because that property, with that incentive, in that location today in 2017, is probably a $6, $8, $10, $12 million property with that additional incentive. Now, you can shake your head, but he's not entering into this agreement because he thinks he's going to lose money. He's just pretty well assured he's going to make money. There are tens of thousands of developers across the United States that would be glad to take a look at this project and maybe bid on it and offer you something more without being incentivized to the tune of, you know, $5.5 million, another $3, $4, $5 million for the value of the property. But you didn't look there. So why didn't you look there? That's the appearance of impropriety. You haven't offered this up for bid. You didn't offer it to me. You didn't offer it to anybody else. You see this button I've got on my shirt? See that? I've got three of them. You know what they say? They say, "I'm number one." Don't see this? Okay. It's me, the citizen. The key element in this city, it's to my interest you should be looking, not to propose a sweetheart deal for a private developer who's going to make a profit at it, or he wouldn't enter into it. Okay? But, you know, you're not interested. You're not interested in Mr. Wolf. You're not interested in what I have to say. You're not going to go back and reconsider it. You're going to jam it down the citizens of Royal Oak, talking about how much you care. Estate sales, I go to yard sales, garage sales, things like that. I see the true condition of so many people who've lived in Royal Oak for so long. Their carpet is threadbare at their death. They've been living almost like street hobos and street urchins in their own houses because they can't hardly afford to live here. And you're going to price them out. What you're doing is you're taking their tax money, and you're, just like the old feudal system, you're drawing it up into the castle, and you're spending it on yourselves. I'm a licensed general contractor, and I run an engineering firm out of state, all right? But I do some work here, and I live here. This building that you want to tear down, that the mayor said, the past mayor said is trash, could, I could replumb it and put a roof on this thing and give you another 30 to 50 years for $2, $3 million bucks, not the $46 million...
Alsop, I'm going to need you to finish. Okay, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I appreciate you indulging me for the few seconds that you're affording me. But the decisions you're making aren't smart decisions. They're decisions made in your best interest or in the best interest of private for-profit operators. Not me, and as you see, I'm number one, and you're forgetting about me. That's why Trump won, and that's why he's going to win again in 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. Just a second installment on the lack of critical thinking. Regarding the office building downtown, that seems to be the theme tonight. Employees are in the office for eight hours a day and leave at 5:00 PM. So where does the increase in daytime shopping come from? We do not see the anticipated business from OCC when they are on and off the campus several times during the day. Lunch hour may not be an hour since restaurants are within walking distance. When we had our offices in downtown Detroit, we only had 45 minutes because you could walk to a restaurant. What about that 8,000 square feet of restaurant space in the building without an external access? Will it be subsidized for the building employees like we saw with the First of America building? People are not likely to stop and shop after work. It's 5 o'clock, they're headed home. And who are these consultants that have recommended office to increase foot traffic during the day? Retail Coach? Ran them out on the rail. They kept talking about the rental rates being too high downtown, but they couldn't tell me what the rental rates were. You know, I've said before, you people are lousy pickers for consultants. As far as I'm concerned, the task force was just going along with what the city administration directed or coached them on. It's all about cash flow for the city, not encouraging retail. What, why have you not done something to preclude office on the ground floor in the central business district that truly interferes with foot traffic for retail? I have my tenants complaining about it all the time. Where is your critical thinking? As far as the Farmer's Market parking is concerned, there were originally 370 spaces. 74 spaces were added for a total of 444. There is still a shortage of parking based on observation, not studies. The new City Hall and Police Station will reduce the parking to 240 spaces, or 54% of what the current parking is. A former mayor commented that we added 90 spaces, and they're still complaining. Did it ever occur to you that the additional space only provided a portion of the parking shortage? Meanwhile, your surrogates are out there making fun of those who speak about the parking shortage. Again, where's your critical thinking? As far as the DDA appointment is concerned, we need a downtown commercial rental property owner on the DDA. The rest of the membership is well-balanced. You have two retailers, two bar restaurant owners. You have one office building owner-occupier. You have one DDA resident, which is required, and a large member, which is appropriate, and the city manager. The most recent appointment, as I said, is from a law firm employee with only three years out of school. Now, what kind of a background is that? I'm not picking on the young lady. I'm just picking on the, on the thinking of people that would apply, appoint somebody with so little background. Again, where's your critical thinking? The other thing that I raised several months ago was the city's capture, or potential capture of the school tax, the TIF taxes on this office building. Non-Homestead pays over three times what Homestead does. It's around $22 versus $6.70 a thousand. The Boji building, my estimate, will pay over $1.5 million a year in taxes, based on $150 a square foot. And the school tax will be about $245,000, plus or minus. Will the, will the DDA be capturing the school taxes? We don't know. I asked one of the school board members, and the person said, "Well, they were having a meeting the next day with the superintendent and the financial person at the school board, and they would get back to me." I've called them, they never got back, and I've called twice, and they're avoiding me. That tells me something. You know, the DDA typically launders back to the city 110% of what the city would have collected in property tax without the DDA. In some cases, they're on thin ice with respect to eligible expenses, i.e. the added police protection, and they formally paid for the courthouse bond. What benefit does the courthouse have to the central business district? Again, it's all about cash flow to the city, not encouraging retail. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison? Who's next? Bone once? Yes, ma'am. In the back. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No. Okay. All right.
I'm Pam Roby. I live at 805 Phillips. I grew up in Royal Oak. I love Royal Oak. It is so charming and a warm, inviting feeling, which many cities don't have. And Europe doesn't tear down their buildings. That's most of their charm. They use what they have, and you can't ever get it back once you tear it down. This monstrosity that you want to allow happen right out here, you're going to destroy Royal Oak. You're going to destroy that warm, inviting feeling that people flock to. It's going to be gone. It might as well be Troy, it might as well be Big Beaver. All the high-rises, parking decks, which I'm afraid to go on a parking deck. I do, I don't like it. I feel uneasy, and I feel vulnerable. I bet you most women do. Some men I know do. It just, that monstrosity is, how can you guys allow that? And if, it might as well be, like I said, Big Beaver, and if you allow this to happen, I don't, I would think people would want to avoid Royal Oak. Royal Oak Farmer's Market, I don't know if that's exactly involved or not, the building itself, but you're going to take away a lot of customers. It's going to hurt the farmers. They're the essence of our nation. If you hurt the farmers, you're hurting everybody. And that's one of the most charming farmer's markets I've ever been in, compared to Flint, Kalamazoo. I've been to many of them, and ours is wonderful, and that parking, which the court already took away part of those parking spaces. And it just, you know, you can't replace the charm. And this was designed by architect, you know, the architect-designed schools. That's part of what makes it just warm and homey-feeling. And this building, you know, it's plenty big enough, and you could just fix what needs to be fixed for much cheaper. And it's bad enough that what was allowed to building that, was it a three or four-deck behind NutraFoods? That's bad enough, and it's hurting them. And it just, you know, you can't see across, and the trees that used to be in the parking lot, you just can't duplicate that ever again. And it's just, it'll be very sterile also, not to mention, not even to mention the money, which has already been talked about tonight, so I don't need to discuss that. I'm just saying the feeling is gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna hurt this town. This town, I think, will be, it will be devastating to this town. I think you get the picture. Okay?
Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you.
Who's next? Yes, in the back. Yes.
This is for public record, of course. This is in regards to the meeting August 28th...
I'm so sorry. We're going to need your name and address for the record.
Victoria Shunk, 233 East Webster Road. Okay. This is in regards to the commission meeting August 28th, 2017, and the contractor receiving $5.5 million in the parcel of land. Commissioner Perush stated, I quote, "Some of the people who were here this evening objecting to this project are the same people back in those days who were objecting all those incentives," unquote. Her statement referred to the incentives given to resuscitate the downtown area when the DDA was established. And perhaps her memory didn't serve her well. There were so many other factors in play at that time. While the city sorely needed resurrecting, it was not the same people. The few people who did protest were concerned with rising taxes and feared the city services would be cut. This has come to fruition. Back then, at that time, when the DDA was established, our police force was twice what it is now. Two men for car. The fire department had four to six men per truck, which is recommendation of the NFPA, and all the trucks were in service. Now, today, our city doesn't need resurrecting, but our city services do. We pay a millage to keep our police and fire and EMS staffed and in service. There is only one police officer per car. There are only two firefighters per trucks, and two ambulances in service. There is one ambulance out of service, and I believe two trucks. Rumors circulating are the 13 and Rochester Fire Station will be sold. It is not uncommon for the citizens of Royal Oak to know the State of Michigan institutes mutual aid response, which means if Oakland County City needs Royal Oak Police, Fire, and apparatus or an ambulance under the mutual aid response, Royal Oak is required to respond to the other city's needs and requests. Royal Oak cannot leave the scene. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Royal Oak cannot respond to, Royal Oak cannot leave the scene in any city, such as Pontiac, Madison Heights, Berkeley, or Birmingham, for our own city's emergency until the scene is secured in said city. They have been, there have been instances where both ambulances have had to respond to mutual aid emergencies out of Royal Oak, which has left our city unprotected. When that happens, at that time, a private ambulance company alliance is notified. Alliance Ambulance Company circulates throughout Oakland County and can be as far away as Clarkston, Southfield, Waterford. Both situations in the aforementioned drastically cuts down on quick response times needed in life-saving measures and situations. Every second feels like a minute, and minutes feel like hours while you're waiting for an emergency service to show up at your door. God forbid any of you people need a service when they're out of town. The $6.5 million given to Mr. Boji would have well paid for the personnel to man the ambulance for many years. I respectfully request the city government reaches into their deep pockets and reinstate the ambulance at 13 and Rochester per our millage agreement. the ambulance at 13 and Rochester per our millage agreement, especially know now that we will have 700 more people in our city promised by Mr. Boji. One last word for you. The definition of legacy cost. Legacy costs are those incurred by organizations, whether corporate or city, in prior years under different leadership or when the entity's priorities and resources were different, which refers to all debt, bonds, et cetera, not just exclusive to pension funds. Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Greg Stanley, H0617 Dewey. Mr. Harris, obviously you missed the May 26 interview with the mayor when he talked about 1,400 new employees down here and it's 168,000 lunches per week. You don't know where the extra money's coming from. As far as the farmer's market parking, we can probably talk to the former mayor, Jim Ellison, about the parking study that was delivered in late 2015 that went to this body in 2016 in March that was never shared with the DDA, the Planning Commission, or any of the residents. But let's really talk about fiscal responsibility and their lack thereof with this whole group. There's so many topics for that discussion. How about sidewalks? The city's been illegally charging residents for years for sidewalks. There are two ways to get that, a special assessment or the city pays, and that's per the city charter. All you got to do is go to Miller Canfield's website. They published the findings based on the lawsuit that's still pending, yet the city continues to use taxpayer money to fight their way out of something that's clearly documented by the city charter. It's been in violation of the charter since they started and passed the ordinance, and what we're waiting for next is a class action lawsuit of every resident who's been charged to replace a slab to sue the city for all their money back, which would be a great travesty to the city, wouldn't it? Now, you've got a charter amendment proposal. You want to remove the dollar amount on the charters. This certainly fits with your MO of no bid contracts. You got illegal sidewalk contracts. You bury details into consent agreements, so you don't publish them until hours before the meeting, and you're hiding information from the taxpayers. You got new expenditures on tonight's budget, or tonight's meeting. Noah and Fraus for a quarter of a million dollars. Rich and Associates for a half a million dollars. Always to the same people. And oh, by the way, Rich and Associates is Boji's parking consultant, too. No conflict of interest, and you're getting the best possible results for the citizens of Royal Oak, aren't you with that? As we were already told about conflict of interest, you should all remove yourself. While existing lawsuits are still in discovery phase over this project, you're going to spend another three quarters of a million dollars of taxpayers' money by awarding contracts you're liable for anyways. And then we brought up Normandy Oaks tonight. That's a joke. Goes back to the previous mayor. Went to every beginning meeting. You still can't publish a budget for it. He told me not to worry about the budget, and here we are today. We sold the property for less money than we expected, and now we're trying to build a park. You guys have a history of doing nothing fiscally responsible. You're exceeding the Royal Oak Charter bond limits. Regardless of your paid consultant, the state statute is a guideline. The charter is the law, and you've already violated the law, and you've got another 58 million that you're looking at adding to that. This is a monarchy, not a government for the people or by the people. I've heard a lot of things about the party of no. You all are the party of no, NO. You have no checks and balances, no concern for the farmer's market, no transparency, no listening to taxpaying residents, no bid contracts are the norm, no legal ability to charge residents for sidewalks, no fiscal responsibility, no issues breaking the law by blatantly violating the city charter, no issues with breaking downtown businesses that have been paying taxes for years for the if comes, no problem stacking the deck with others in the DDA, Planning Commission, and city departments like you're about to do tonight with some new appointments. You have no real leadership here, no outside opinions considered, no increase of city services, yet increased taxes almost every year. We have no additional police and fire to justify the $9 million collected annually, and obviously, there's no fiscal responsibility. And we'll continue to see that as we move forward. There's more things to discover, trust me. You guys all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Skinner. I live at 130 East Sunnybrook here in Royal Oak, running for mayor, as all of you know. And I'm going to be relatively brief today. The first point that I'd like to make is, everyone continues at every meeting that I've been here to talk about the financial situation involving the city center. And the response has been from the council that, you know, putting out an RFP wouldn't work because no one was interested. Well, that just falls on deaf ears to me, that I think that it's up to the leading bodies, you folks, and to communicate that you're putting out an RFP and get people to a meeting. If people aren't coming to the meetings, they're not coming because they're not interested. They're not, they're coming because you are not getting them interested. They're not getting enough information. They're not getting it timely enough. Setting agendas for this meeting on Thursday or Friday and expecting people to be here on Monday is wrong. Setting town halls and having three days' notice is wrong. And we need to get out in front of it. I have proposed a two-year budget like Oakland County does, who is a AAA+, where we're AA. And I think that we're always behind, we're always lacking behind. If I haven't been at the commission meetings, I've been watching them, and we're talking about so many projects going on that I just don't understand how financially we're doing it. And as hard as I've worked to look at the budgets, to understand the budgets, to understand the proposals, to make sense of them all, that there isn't a place where we can get it. And it brings me to a question. And I've had multiple residents, multiple people in the city come to me over the last couple of weeks and tell me that Saquon Bawa is no longer our acting treasurer, that he was walked out of the building, that his assistant was fired two days before or left the city. And I'd like to know what's going on there. If it is, then I think it's a responsibility of you folks to tell us. I would encourage people that work for the city of Royal Oak, the city attorney, the city manager, everyone involved, to get out in front of this. If we're having problems financially, then it needs, you need to tell the residents before we invest all these money in these projects. I'd like to see a balance sheet of how much cash we have and where we're getting the money from, because there's lots of allegations of money being moved around in different areas. And I think it's only fair to us, our citizens, to respond to that, the claims that have been made to me. And I'd encourage city employees to come forward and talk to me or talk to whoever they may to get that information out, and I'd hope that as a governing body that you protect those people who want to talk, because we're not getting it as a citizens. You're not providing it. Can't find it on a website that makes any sense. So I'm asking you that. Please step forward on that. And the other question I have is, I received a survey the other day that asked about how the city was doing, and a lot of the questions that we have around the politics associated with what the city is doing are on that thing. And I talked to several hundred people, and I talked to one other person that got that. And it was paid for. It had the city of Royal Oak on it. It had the emblem. And I want to know what's going on with that information. Is that something that is being used for politics today? Or is that something that we're using for some type of information that's going to make us a better city? It had all the farmer's market, what they thought about current government, and it was to a very select group, and luckily, I became part of that select group, and, you know, I was happy to answer it truthfully. But, you know, this is a political season. There's a lot of things that I, a lot of different issues here that are very important to us as citizens, to you very important as leaders of this city. And the problem is, is that for many, many years, people have fallen asleep. They've become lethargic in terms of their voting. And part of it is that everyone's busy and we have busy lives. But the other part, just like I started with, is the meetings, that if you don't get people here, you don't get people talking, if you don't engage them, if you don't bring them in, if you don't have town halls, then you're never really going to know where we're coming from. So if you could answer those two questions for me, why? Do we have a treasurer now? Is he active? Is there something that led to this to happen, if it's true? And secondly, why was this survey sent out to very few, and why haven't we seen it on any websites, the results, and do you plan on portioning them? That would be greatly appreciated. I do appreciate your service. I know all of you are working hard. You're giving up your time to do this, and I think that's awesome of you, and I have respect for you in that. I disagree with you on a lot of things, but I do have respect for you serving this city, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erin Commission, Carol Hennessy, 258 East 12 My Road. Veterans Day is coming up Saturday, November 11th, and I just wanted to let you know about our activities we are having. This year, the recruiting office in Madison Heights and the city of Royal Oak will be putting on a 2.2-mile ruck march. A ruck march is a run or walk, however you want to do it, with a backpack on your back. And we're asking everyone to either have 22 items in your backpack or 22 pounds in your backpack, symbolizing the 22 veterans that commit suicide every day. Items you can put into your backpack are liquid soap, deodorant, shampoo, hair brushes, playing cards, white socks with no elastic, combs, shaving cream, razors. Food items could be canned goods, cereal, crackers, tea bags, hard candy, gum, hot chocolate packets, Kleenex, and pocket calendars. We will be starting the run at 9:30 a.m. by the Star Dream right outside City Hall and end at the VFW parking lot. Everything that the runners carry in the backpack will be donated to the VA Hospital and to the pantry for veterans in Macomb County. There will be a fee for the race of $10 for those over 18, and under 18 will be $5. And any military personnel is free. This money will be donated to the World War II Monument Project. After the run, the runners will follow the honor guard from the VFW to the Veterans Memorial Plaza, where the service will be promptly started at 11 a.m. At the service, we will be welcoming home our Vietnam veterans and thanking them again for all that they have done for us. And at that time, Senator Marty Nolenberg will present pins to our Vietnam veterans. If you know of a Vietnam veteran serving between 1955 to 1975, please let me know. We need to know how many veterans we'll be having so we have enough pins for everybody. So you can just contact me or contact Judy Davidson. Later on, I'll let you know our numbers. We will also have the gentlemen songsters singing during the service, and our students from Royal Oak High School will be playing taps, and then we'll have the 9th Kentucky Infantry doing the rifle salute. We hope you will all attend and honor our veterans and thank them for all they have done for us. If you need more information or want to sign up, please call me, Carol Hennessy, at 248-543-8420. And Judy Davids, if you want to be in the run, and she's in the city manager's office, and her number is 248-246-3200. And I hope you can all come. And I just passed out flyers to all of you, so you can see it and hopefully come. And I have gotten a number of calls, and I thought I should probably bring it up here. I am not exactly sure what the piece of art is that's out here on the memorial lawn, but it would be nice if we could have it removed. I've gotten a number of calls from veterans, and they all feel that it's distracting and it's not an honorable piece of art that is at the monument. If you have a piece of art that reflects to veterans, that would be fine, but I don't know what this is, and they don't know what it is, and they feel that you're disgracing the veterans by having it there. So if there's anything that you can do to have it removed, I would appreciate it. I have no problem with art, and I love some of the art that we have around the city, but not at this site. So, thank you.
Anybody else tonight?
Everybody. It's Tim Chahorsky. I'm at 1837 West Farnham. I want to thank Commissioner Donigan and my other colleagues on the Parks and Recreation Commission for my nomination to the Downtown Park Task Force. I'd like your support in that nomination. I want to look forward to serving the city. And I was real fast, that was 15 seconds. I'll make other quick comments.
Anybody else for this evening? Yes, sir, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I apologize for my casual dress. I did not come here tonight with the intention of speaking. I should say, Jim Ellison, 1309 Mohawk, City of Royal Oak, Michigan, mayor of this community for the last 13 years. My name was brought up a number of times in public comment tonight, and I'm not going to stand up here and try to defend myself, because, you know, as we all know, we're in a political season, and hyperbole is out there in mass doses, and we have a bunch of passionate people with passion and ideas, speaking passionately about their passion. And so, and that's what happens, and I'm really no different. But there were a couple of things that were said tonight, talking about the RFP process that we went through when we advertised this property. In my experience, I was in the construction industry for 30 years. In my experience, you go out for an RFP, which is a formal request for proposal. If you have a simple project, and I'll use the Normandy Oaks Residential as that example. We had 10 acres of property. We wanted residential retail. We wanted some multifamily, and we gave specifications and, you know, defined it. And we had multiple developers come back with those ideas. The difference on this piece of property over here, coming out of the Downtown Task Force, is we had come out with the charge that the city of Royal Oak needed to have 180,000 square foot of office, class A office space by 2020. And we designated, I believe it was seven, public parking lots that the city could make available for this type of development. And Mr. Fenton, at the time, contacted the trade publications business, Detroit, Crane's business, the newspapers, the various trade publications that go to the high-end developers, and told them exactly that. This is our goal. This is what we've got. Are you interested in any of the properties? The reason we didn't go for an RFP on these properties is because we wanted the high-end developers to come in with creative ideas, because we didn't know what we wanted. We wanted to hear their ideas. We wanted to hear how they could improve this and how they could help us accomplish our goals. But in the standard RFP format, the developer won't respond, because it's got to be a public opening, and they do not want to divulge their secrets, their trade secrets, their ideas that they have. They don't want to divulge it to public form, because they don't want them to be stolen. And that is standard practice in this industry. When you've got a big development, as big as this was, that's the process we followed. Mr. Fenton was familiar with it. I know I was familiar with it. People and staff and community development, that was the process we went. There was no written formal RFP, but in essence, there was an RFP, and we went out through the trade publications and contacted these peoples and asked them, just like I described. The condition of this building was brought up, and yes, the building has been analyzed. It's a very, building in very poor shape. And yes, we could invest money in a new roof. We could invest money in a new plumbing system. We could invest a lot of money to bring this building so that it functions properly, but will never function properly as a city hall. We don't have the ability to open up the floors, because the columns support the floors and get in the way. You can't have an open floor plan, which makes it conducive for efficient running of a city hall operation with less people. And so the goal was to try to get as much public operation on a first floor and as much administration operation on the second floor. So, yeah, this building could be rebuilt. It costs a lot of money, because it's in pretty sad shape, but it would never be rebuilt to the point that it could be reused as a city hall. Mention was made about, we used to have a lot of police officers. We used to have a lot of firefighters. lot of firefighters, and now we don't. Well, we used to have 85,000 people, and now we don't. And so we, as we went through this process, when I was elected mayor back in 2003, we were struggling with this. We still had too many police officers, and we couldn't afford them. And so we went through that painful process of decline by attrition, where somebody would retire or resign, we wouldn't fill that position. Until we got down to a point where our police chief told us, we can't go any lower. This is where it is. And he had a plan designed out that he can cover this city, keep it very safe, with 76 patrol officers. And that's what we designed for. That's the mileage we asked for, and that's where we're at. Same thing with the fire department. With the fire chief's input and other professionals, we needed 55 firefighters online. We can cover the city with two ambulances, with a spare ambulance, like we have. So we are doing exactly what we told the people we were going to do in the mileage request, which was just renewed by a very large margin here last year. Other than that, I mean, again, it's a lot of hyperbole. I'm sorry, am I running out of time? I'm not even watching. I'll quit. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anybody else tonight? Going once? Um, Mr. Esprit?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Clyde Esprit, 4135 South Fulton Place. Like the former mayor, I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight either, but hearing the tenor of some of the comments out there, I just felt that I needed to sort of speak up to somebody who's run many meetings in this town, both at the planning commissioner level and at the ZBA level. You know, it's okay to disagree with the vision of a project, and if the folks in the audience disagree with the vision for the city center project, then that's certainly their prerogative. I personally think that the incentive being creative and the upside when, when the project comes to fruition makes it more than worth it, but, you know, reasonable people can disagree. One thing that has always bothered me is when somebody walks up to the microphone and starts from a proposition of, you're incompetent, you're stupid, you're not listening to us, you don't understand. I'm looking at attorneys, I'm looking at people who are experts in city planning, political experts. I mean, we have seven very bright people sitting at this table who deserve to be spoken to, any better tone of voice. I know for me personally, when I'm running a meeting and somebody just walks up and just instantly starts off from a position of complete disrespect, it's hard to return that respect. These people could have very easily spoken to you in a very reasonable tone and said, these are my objections, these are why I disagree, I don't think the numbers add up the way you see them, and that's fine. I would just say that if they would take a little more civil tone, perhaps they would see the, what's the word I'm looking for? The more respectful responses that they feel that they're entitled to, and they are entitled to them. But again, when you talk to people like they're idiots, they're going to turn their ears off. Have a great night.
Anybody else that hasn't spoken tonight? Going once, going twice, and we're bringing the meeting back up to here. All right. Before we, I just know there's a couple of questions I think we can help some folks out real quick. As it relates to the public survey opinion, I'm not sure that everybody knows that they've received it, because not everyone gets one. We do, for the last number of years, every other year, we're sending out a public opinion survey, and that's a scientific survey done by, and supported by Cobalt. Judy Davids and her team are the ones that send it out to randomized addresses to make sure that we're getting the feedback. We've been doing it, it's been very helpful for us to make decisions up here at the table. You often hear things on Facebook, or you might hear things at public comment, but this is really a chance for us to get a scientific pulse on what, you know, the priorities are for the community. Maybe, Ms. Davids, if you don't mind, you can talk a little bit more about it, because it sounded like there were some questions about this survey. It's a, it's a pretty regular thing we've been, at least since, I've been on the board since 2011.
Yes, we're doing a cert, public opinion survey every odd number of years since 2013. So this is our third one, and it's a scientific sampling, and it's sent out, oh, I'm sorry, we did another survey, a different kind of survey. But what this does is it measures Royal Oak's customer, American Customer Satisfaction Index, and it compares us year to year, so we see if we're doing better or worse. It also helps us with budgeting and how we allocate resources. You can see the most recent survey, which was done in 2015, that's online, if you go to the city manager's page. It will kind of give you an overview of why we do this survey, what the goals are of the survey. And then after we get a sampling back that makes it scientific, we do post it online and allow everybody to take it. We hesitate to put it online until we get back our sampling, because we're afraid that people that get the survey will then say, well, I took it online, so I don't need to fill out the paper survey. So, people, I just heard today from Cobalt that they have a big enough sampling to make it scientific, and so people can look for the survey online, and we welcome everybody to take it. But it, it compares us to the state of Michigan, to other communities our size, and the same questions are asked every two years, so you can compare apples to apples. It's not like a brand-new set of questions every year, and we don't know what it means. We compare ourselves to how we were doing two years ago, every two years. Am I making sense? So, anyways, but, yeah, it should be available for everybody to take online very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Davids.
Yep.
I think there's a question about the budget, too. We do have it. If anyone's struggling to find it, you can just type in budget in the romy.gov, there's a search function, and we have budgets going back, oh geez, I don't know how many years, but they're roughly 300 to 400 pages each, and they tell you exactly where every dollar goes. I know we spend about three or four days in each May going over almost every single line item as it relates to the budget. So if there's any ever questions about the budget, you know, you're going through it, you want to know something, you know, feel free to ask a question, but it's pretty comprehensive. Our finance team has actually won an award for the fact that the budget's pretty comprehensive. So I know some questions come up from time to time, but we really have a good search function there, so. Any other thoughts up here? Okay, all right. Well, we will go to the consent agenda, which is item number six, which consists of city commission meeting minutes from September 25, 2017, claims from September 29 and October 10.
You skipped the approval of the agenda.
Oh, yes, I did. That brings us to item number five, the approval of the agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Dubach, is there support? Commissioner Douglas, any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. All right, should not work from paper and digital at the same time. All right, now that brings us to the consent agenda, which consists of city commission meeting minutes from September 25, 2017, claims from September 29 and October 10, approval of purchase orders, declaration and disposal of surplus property, approval of Michigan Drug Court Grant Program contract, amended resolution, 600 South Main Street exclusivity period extension, special event permit, Ultimate Fund Productions, Ropertoberfest, October 20 and 21, 2017, special event permit, the Moore Halloween Celebration, approval of access to property and business service order agreement for 212 South Center Street Garage Data Circuit, approval of revised license agreement, 831 Lockwood, contract modification, contract CAP 1505 Concrete Street Repair Improvements, Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution for 2018 Street Administrator, Award of Professional Engineering Services Royal Civic Center Site Connectivity Design, and Award of Professional Services Contract Richness Associates. Is there a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, support, supported by Commissioner Bolton. Any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. So this brings us to item number seven, which is the appointments of the Downtown Park Task Force, and I believe Mr. Johnson has taken this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the September 11 city commission meeting, it was resolved to create a Downtown Park Task Force, and it was determined that that task force will consist of two members of the Parks and Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board, a representative of the Downtown Development Authority, three mayoral appointments, and three city commissioners. Since September 11, the Parks and Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board has met, as has the DDA, and both bodies have decided upon who they would like to represent them. And also, Mayor Fournier has chosen three members of the community for his appointments. Only the three members of the city commission need to be determined. We have a resolution ready for adoption. The Parks and Rec Board, I'm going to attempt this, is recommending Mark Ryan and Tim something. Does anybody know how to pronounce Tim's last name?
Chahorsky.
Please say it louder, Mark.
Chahorsky.
Okay, I apologize, but the DDA is recommending Jay Dunston, the DDA Chair. And finally, the mayor is appointing Frank Arvin, Amy McDonald, and Dominic Marabella. And we still have the three city commissioners to be named.
Mr. Marley?
Well, first, I think there's a typo in Tim Chahorsky's last name, right, Tim? Yeah. So we should correct that. I don't think there's an A at the end of that, Ms. Allison, for your records. Or, yeah, no As.
Let me apologize again, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, I was hoping you could give us a little bit of background on the three appointees.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, I mean, my strategy going into this appointment had many different dimensions to it. You know, certainly, we're going to draw from the DDA, we're going to draw from our amazing Parks and Rec Board, and both Tim and Ryan, I know, do an amazing job. And of course, we're going to bring the experience from the commission here, you know, elected by, you know, our residents. But with the Downtown Park, what we're looking at here is a park that isn't just for the downtown. This is really a park that is going to be a jewel for everybody in the community. So when I started thinking about the representation, the diversity, the criteria that we wanted in people, you know, I felt that these three met a number of that criteria. For example, Mr. Arvin is a well-known architect. He's had actually some experience with Downtown Park proposals before on this site. He lives right adjacent to downtown, if not in downtown. I mean, I'm trying to picture the line where we, where we draw it, and expressed some great interest. And he'll bring a number of years of experience into this role. Amy McDonald is from the 48073 zip code in Royal Oak. She's from the northern part. She's a proud parent, has served on the PTA at, in the elementary school that her kids go to. She's professionally, her experience, I think, will bring some great insights into the types of things we can bring into the park, and I'm happy and glad, after speaking with her, that she'll be an amazing fit. And of course, Dominic Marabella, he's most famously known for picking football teams in the pursuit of winning a million dollars, but what most people don't know is that Dominic also has a family in town. He lives in the northern part of, of the city, and he's a, he's a great West Point grad, a veteran, and I think with Memorial Park there, he'll add some great insights as far as what we can do and expand and honor our veterans as, as we go through this transition. So there's probably 100 other things, Commissioner Marley, I could mention, but that's really, I guess, the, the top elements that I was hoping to achieve with these three appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. My other question is, well, for you and for one, two, three, four of you who will still be up here after November, who's interested in serving on the task force?
We have Commissioner Douglas, we have Commissioner Perusch, we have Commissioner Dubach. Dave?
I, you know, I considered doing this, but after the meeting we had with the Normandy Oaks, we want to be in a lot of meetings and a lot of time consumed with that one, so I think it'd be best if other people on the commission...
Well, I guess first I'll make a motion, as written with the spelling correction to Tim Chahorsky's name, and in the last paragraph with Commissioners Douglas, Perusch, and Dubach.
Our, Commissioner Dubach, are you...
Is that a motion?
That wasn't a motion. So we have a motion by Commissioner Marley, we have support by Commissioner Dubach, but before we move forward with the motion, all the folks affected by the motion are in agreement with the motion? Okay, all right, good. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Commissioner Marley, anything to add to your motion?
Nothing to add to the motion, but if I may, Mayor, can I make a comment?
You may make a comment.
I am so excited that we're moving forward with this Downtown Park. This is, four years ago, when I ran for this office, something I talked about with every voter whose door I knocked on, and the response was so overwhelmingly positive that, you know, I got elected to the office to help see my vision for a Downtown Park come to fruition. Unfortunately, I won't be here to help further with, you know, by serving on the task force, but I am just so pleased that we're going to be able to have this really great public space, this really great space for people, for families, for seniors, for young people and old people alike in the heart of our downtown. I just can't tell you how excited I am that we're, we're really moving forward on this. Yeah, I mean, that's it. My, my goal up here all along has been to, you know, Royal, I love Royal Oak, and that's why I ran for this office in the first place, but, you know, my goal all along has been to make this a better city for people. It was already a really great city for people, but to make it even better for, for people. You know, we're, we're taking steps with a non-motorized transit plan to help people get around the city easier and more efficiently, and, you know, we ran a little pilot project by closing Main Street for a couple of evenings. I don't like using the word "closed," because it was still very much open, and we had a lot of, a lot of people come out and experience Main Street. A lot of young families, Commissioner Dubach and Commissioner Fournier's and Commissioner Bolton's kids playing duck, duck, goose in the street, and it was just such a great experience. And, you know, we saw it with, we have seen it and continue to see it with the Summer Concert Series on Center Street, you know, that, that people want to be downtown. And, and I really see this as a great way to bring people into, into our business district, into our downtown, and tying them in with the library, with the farmer's market, with City Hall, and the rest of what downtown has to offer. You know, we, as I said, we've seen with our little experiments that people want to be down here, and I think this park is really going to bring, bring people downtown. So thank you, Commissioners Perusch, Dubach, and Douglas, for stepping up to serve on the task force, making something really cool.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Commissioner Dubach?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah. Commissioner Marley nailed it. There's pent-up demand for a downtown gathering space, and this green space is something we've been talking about since long, as a city, since long before I was at this table, and I'm really excited to see us moving forward with it. I think recognizing not just the placemaking element of having a park and, and bringing a family-friendly community space to the downtown is one tremendous benefit that I think residents have been asking for for a long time. There's also the benefit of turning what is now slabs of concrete into a large green space that absorbs water and reduces water runoff into our sewer system. It opens up space for the farmer's market to expand, which is another really, really exciting possibility. And so, you know, I'm pleased to be, you know, serving on this task force to, to really realize the vision of this park in a way that is so aligned with so many different community priorities. And it's one element of the Civic Center Project that, you know, you can point to, you know, the 10 different community priorities that we're accomplishing with, and, you know, in spite of some of the, you know, negative comments we heard tonight, I think it's important to recognize that every element of what we're doing here is in response to overwhelming demand from residents for these things, for downtown green space, for increased energy efficiency from our city buildings, you know, for increased foot traffic in the downtown and new and exciting retail, and, you know, improved public safety, and, and yes, you know, it's revenue positive for the city with no new taxes at all, and we're making this happen. So there's a lot to be excited about, there's a lot of work yet to do, and that's what this task force is going to do, and I look forward to being a part of it. this task force is going to do, and I'm going to afford to be a part of it.
Commissioner Perusch?
I just want to agree with everything that Commissioner Marley and Commissioner Dubach have said about this project, and I'm not going to reiterate that. I think the most intriguing thing about this project to me is that this area used to be a park area when the city was first established and before it got to be as developed as it is. The city didn't start out as a city, it started out as a village, and it was a very small, compact, little commercial area right where we are. But this particular area, where City Hall and Library and everything else is now, was an open space in the middle of what was then a pretty old commercial activity, some of which survives and a lot of which is not here anymore. And I, I think that back in those days, at the turn of the century, the residents recommended and realized that having a central gathering spot in the middle of the community was a benefit to them, and made their community function a lot more efficiently and a lot more friendly, on a friendly basis, because they had that gathering spot there. We certainly don't want to wring back the horse-watering troughs that I saw in the picture of the old park. We certainly don't want to recreate it the way it was at the turn of the century. But on the other hand, I think recreating a park in the area in the city where it used to be when the city started out, I think, is intriguing to me, and I look forward to working on this task force for that reason, as well as a number of the others that the other commissioners have mentioned. Excuse me.
Commissioner Douglas?
So earlier tonight, the mayor talked about the Normandy Oaks Community Input Session that's going to be taking place basically all day on October twenty-eighth. Commissioner Donigan and I serve on that committee, and I think offered a lot of input and suggestions to enhance that experience. Two weeks ago, I attended the Michigan Association of Planning Annual Conference, and there were so many great examples of community engagement tools and community engagement successes by cities and communities around Michigan, and that's my passion, is to make sure that, as Commissioner Dubach says, this is original, this is not just a neighborhood park, this is even more than a citywide park, because it's going to serve not just our residents, but our visitors, it can be a destination. And so I want to, I will serve on this task force with my mission to make sure that our, the feedback that we get from people is robust and thorough and representative of all of the different people who are going to experience it. This is an important listening opportunity for a feature that is going to really define our city for scores, if not hundreds of years, and that's the, that's the direction that I will bring to the task force.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Donigan?
Well, everybody said what I was going to say. Hey, when it happens. When I was growing up, we did have green space out here. I remember looking at the green space from the dentist's office. So, and I was going to say also, we have a watering trough, a horse trough in our backyard that we made into a fountain. So this is back, but old is new, right? So, but I'm sure we'll have a water feature. I was going to talk about the public engagement, that's the really important part of this project, public engagement from the farmer's market, every group you can even imagine, because everybody will have some input into this, which, which, you know, given the tenor of the public comment tonight, it's so great to be able to talk about something positive that's going to happen in Royal Oak amongst all the other positive things that are happening in Normandy Oaks, really great. This is such a great project. I won't be on the commission then, but I'll be at every single meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Donigan. Anybody else? I guess the only thing I'll add is that, you know, how remarkable is it that, you know, we're delivering upon what the residents wanted, and the residents are going to be the biggest contributor to what it will be. So it's not this commission, it's not architects, it's not, you know, a third party. Our residents, through this board, through this commission, and through the robust and unprecedented community engagement process we're going to have, this is going to be an amazing park, and I like what Commissioner Douglas said, it's going to be, and we're going to make sure that every representative of life is incorporated into what we put in here. With that being said, I don't, and I won't sit on this board, so I'm going to take privilege here as mayor and just talk to the three commissioners that will be serving there, I hope, and I know you will find, and I'm going to be pushing for a splash and water feature in this park, so.
Oh, my God.
You know, I just want to get that out right now, so.
Okay.
There's no misunderstandings down the road, but I think it's a great opportunity for that. I just love, when we closed down Main Street, you know, like Commissioner Marley said, we really didn't close it down, but, you know, we made it open to pedestrians and bicyclists. It was amazing seeing the families and children return, and this is just another opportunity. Maybe in the future, Main Street, you know, we do that or we don't do that, but with a Downtown Park, this is going to be truly a gathering space for everyone, and we talk about building communities, we're not talking about buildings, we're not talking about structures, we're talking about doing things that will encourage and help and maintain our, and grow our sense of community, and gathering spaces like this will absolutely contribute to the fabric of Royal Oak, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. Commissioner Perusch?
I just want to throw out there that we've all heard the splash pad park, you know. We were in Stratford, Ontario this summer for a little while, for a couple of weekends, and they have a very small triangular island in the middle of a parking area in their downtown, which they've used for a farmer's market on Sundays for a number of years, but it was just a bunch of concrete. They did some renovations to it and spruced it up a little bit, they put some planters and so on and some benches in it, but they also created a splash pad, but it's the kind of splash pad that they can operate during certain hours of the day, and then when it's turned off, you don't even know it's there. It becomes part of the concrete surface, so that you can use it for a large farmer's market on a Sunday, but on a Saturday afternoon, you can activate the splash pads in the one corner of it, and all of a sudden, it's a splash park. So it's a multipurpose thing, it's not one or the other. I had never seen that technology before. I'm used to seeing the one behind the General Motors Building downtown, which is always a splash pad, and it's always wet, and you can't use it for anything else. But clearly, this was a much smaller area that they had to work with, so they really had to maximize their space, and they did it, and I don't know how they engineered it, clearly, somebody knows how to do it. But they can use it as a splash pad when they want to, but when they don't, they can use it for many other purposes, and I just thought that was really cool. So we will be bringing, hopefully, those kinds of ideas into our park plan as well.
That's amazing. I think that's a creativity that I hope comes out of this as well, because, you know, we can look at artistic features, functional features, and really try to blend the community's interests. You know, and speaking of that, it just reminds me, I mean, traditionally, or at least, you know, in my brain, you think of the big colorful splash pads you see in some other communities, you know, then on the other end of it, I picture my dad drinking a beer spraying us with a hose, you know, there's really kind of two, two dynamics in my mind of what these can be, but the more we research it and look into it, there's infinite possibilities, and I, and I, those ideas you brought up, Commissioner Perusch, are really encouraging. Commissioner Marley?
Sorry, Mayor. I don't, I never like to speak, I like to lay off the last word, but I wanted to take a moment to commend you. You know, we're talking about public engagement on this, but right out of the gate, you have really focused on making sure that a diverse array of voices are included at the decision-making table. There's going to be a ton of public engagement for everybody, but right out of the gate, you've got a young person in Tim, a young father in Commissioner Dubach, a young mother in Amy McDonald, a downtown resident in Jay Dunston, a veteran in Dominic Marabella, some more senior people as well, I don't know how else to phrase it.
Watch it, just watch it.
There really is just such a.
Experience.
Thank you.
Experienced people, there you go. A diverse array of voices at the table, so I have every confidence that this task force is going to come up with a product that's going to be great for everyone in our city, and every, as Commissioner Douglas points out, every visitor to our city as well. And my feedback for the members is, I really like the name Town Square instead of Downtown Park. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Anybody else? Okay, well, we have a motion on the table. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We have a Downtown Task Force, Downtown Park Task Force. I guess that brings us to the end of our agenda, so if there isn't any additional business for the betterment of this amazing community we call Royal Oak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Marley?
Mayor, I wanted to take just a moment to express my disappointment with the tenor of the public comment today at our meeting earlier today. It's really disappointing that some candidates are using this austere room as a campaign tool, and they're clearly not interested in the governance that we do up here, because they all quickly escaped after public comment, just full of so much misinformation, clearly reading prepared statements likely prepared by a candidate. That's not what this room is supposed to be about. This room is supposed to be about governing, and I was just very disappointed in the willful ignorance that was portrayed tonight. With that said, in this room Wednesday evening, there's a forum for candidates, so I encourage everyone to come out, watch on the cable channel, really learn what the candidates, who the candidates are, and what, what the vision really is for this city, whether it's positive, whether it's negative, and really decide the direction that you want our city to go. Sorry to say that, Mayor. With that, I hereby declare the people's business done for the evening, and I move that we adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Marley, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Douglas. Any other discussion? None? We'll vote on the motion, it's stated by Commissioner Marley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We adjourned.